Mark this down in my calendar.
I'm dressed better now.
I don't know. Kind of looks like maybe not. It's that time.
I know.
Might do some good.
I'm still listening for a minute. I'm content. You look old, Branson.
Yes. That's in my mind. Good? Good? All right.
This regular session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. We will not be able to livestream tonight's meeting because of technical difficulties, but it is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/ISD535 following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/simbli, S-I-M-B-L-I. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, will you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
He's saying here.
Can't hear you. You're muted.
Director Cook.
They have to unmute.
They're working on unmuting.
Okay, try again.
Yes, I'm here.
Treasure Garcia. Sergeant McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. A note to who is present in the room. If we're still meeting at 7 o'clock, we will be taking a 10-minute recess around that time. We have no speakers registered for comments to the board this evening, so we'll move on to item 4.1, Information and Outreach: Student Athletics Recognitions. This is an information item, Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you very much, Chair Nathan and Board members. As you know, three times a year, we get the chance to recognize our athletes and also sometimes people who have participated in State High School League endorsed academic competitions. We have a separate opportunity to recognize other academic and artistic achievements. Tonight, we get to recognize our athletes and others who participated in our spring sports. It was great to get around the district to see many of you play, and we are incredibly grateful for you taking the time to come down here, especially at parents and other caregivers who are here. I'm going to recognize Mark Queasly, who's our Activities Director at Century High School. Mark is going to be not only sharing the great things that happened at Century, but Brian Urkey, our Activities Director at John Marshall, is out of town, and so Mark will also be doing that. And then we'll have an opportunity to have Jeff Whitney and Mayo High School come on up after that. And so, welcome, and turn it over to you, Mark.
I'd much rather be here than fishing in Canada, so.
Oh, yeah, we know you love us.
I thought I'd better say that first.
Okay, that's fair.
Chair Nathan, Directors, Dr. Pecel. First up for us this evening is the adapted softball, which is Coach Kayla Gannon and Tom Brown, if we would have that group come forward. A little bit about this group. They participated in a state tournament for adapted softball. And Coach Gannon tried to get through the state tournament without giving birth. Didn't quite do that. She got through the first game, the first night, and about 2:30 in the morning, I got a text message that says, "I'm not going to make day two." And so, we're proud of mom.
That's the best reason I've ever heard, though.
But this was a great reason for her not to be at day two. So I'm going to turn it over to Kayla and Tom here.
Thank you. I tried. I tried really hard. We thought we were going to make it to the second day. I had dinner with the team, the family, everything, and, like you said, 2:30 in the morning. She just had different plans, so she's back there. She's in her Raiders gear, very excited to represent. This year was my first year as head coach. I've been involved with Raiders for the past couple of years, but we had a great season. We were really, really happy to be over at Dakota. Of course, there was some, you know, facility kind of learning the curves of how things work, but it was great. Beautiful facility. It was fun to have the teams come visit, and wow, everything's nice, new, love it. So that was super fun. We finished the season 4-3. We had a lot of really big wins. Lot of people who tried new positions. Our captains gave great input, which was really, really awesome. It's nice when the athletes can step up and give perspective and ideas of how things should go. Our team this year, we had kids from Century, Dakota, Kellogg, John Marshall, Mayo, Ian Lourdes, and Byron. We had 15 athletes and ended the season in fourth place at the state tournament. I had to look it all up because I was very much in labor during all of that, so. But they did great. Tom was a huge help, able to step up and kind of fill the role Friday night. Everyone was like, "Well, we hope to see you tomorrow." So it was a fun surprise for me not to be there and have a nice little new one along the way. We have Bradley, Charlie, Calvin, Cooper, and Connor, and William, and Joe and Sam with us tonight. So a few of our seniors that we are definitely going to miss, Bradley, and Charlie, and Calvin, and William, and Joe, but they have put good word out for the next year so that their friends and people can come out and play. We'll try again next year. Hopefully, I won't have a baby at state tournament again.
Okay. We'll have you quick turnaround. Bradley, Bradley, stay here for a second. Bradley, stay here for just a second so that moms and dads can quick get a picture of you guys facing the audience. There you go.
Look at that sweet dog.
Awesome. Great. And we'd also like to recognize any parent or guardians in the audience tonight for the team as well, if you would stand. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Next up, we'll go girls' track and field with Coach Chris Allen.
Thank you for taking the time to recognize our athletic programs because the kids work really hard. And spring sports finish up after the school year is done, so they get really very little recognition. I have with me tonight our 4x200-meter relay team, who finished second. Byaleen at the state meet and just got back from competing at nationals. Elise Johnson, our discus thrower, who won the state title, could not be here tonight. She is playing volleyball and doing track at Mankato State University, and they've already started, so she is at a camp there. In addition to setting a new school record and taking second at state, I'd like to also recognize these young women for their academic accomplishments. As a varsity track program, Century earned Academic All-State Gold Award, which is the highest award you can get as a team, and that's having a GPA of 3.75 or higher cumulatively as a group. Individually, Maddie Haberstad was a Big Nine Scholar Athlete and earned Individual Academic All-State Award. Favor Omo Juwanfo was a Big Nine Scholar Athlete. Megan Lund was an Individual Academic All-State Award winner, and the only reason Clara Gerhard can't be recognized is because she's a middle school student, and so we are not allowed to submit their GPAs. It was a real pleasure to coach the girls this year, and they just had a fantastic season once again. Favor is going on to compete at Drake University, and Maddie will be competing at UW Lacrosse. Thank you.
And if their parents are here, we'd like them to stand and be recognized as well, please. Lot of hard work for a few of those girls, a state runner-up, a state championship, and then a state runner-up. So three years of great sprint relays for us there. Up next, we are going to go to boys' track and field, and Coach Ray Ashworth is stepping in for Coach Eric. Eric is home with the flu, so if Ray and Nate would come up at this time?
So I have the pleasure of introducing Nathan Nelson, who had a fantastic achievement at the state tournament. Many of you may have seen the video several times by now. He set a new state record for Class 3A at 16.1, and it ended up that that 16.1 is now the overall state meet record, which was 16 feet prior to that meet. And so he ended up topping off his season right where we thought we wanted him to be. So, and that's all I have.
And I'm not sure, Nate, are your mom and dad here? Okay, awesome.
All right.
It was at a family reunion over the weekend. Nate, my sister, a proud Badger fan, was surely there telling me about this great Century kid that was coming to run track and field for the Badgers. So, good luck to you there. Up next, girls' lacrosse. I think I have one or two of the girls' lacrosse athletes come on up. Girls' lacrosse, Tyler Johnson works in Rochester and outside of Rochester, and he, in his job, was not able to get back in time. We have Academic All-State Honorees in girls' lacrosse. The team GPA was a gold at 3.93 for the entire team. We had Ava Austin, Cameron Manteno, Kaitlyn Mo, and Zoe Royston, and this is Zoe. And again, Academic All-State Girls' Lacrosse. And I think mom is here. Girls' softball, Stacy Sveals. Is Stacy here tonight? I know that Madison Feeks also was an All-State for us in softball, Academic All-State for us in softball, and Maddie is very busy within the softball community as well. Lastly, for Century High School, we hosted the visual arts competition for the Minnesota State High School League as a regional site. We had over 300 entries in 12 different categories in Class A and Class AA, and in each of those 12 categories, they choose the superior rating and then the best in sight, and Rochester did very well in best in sight. And I'm not sure if Ian Vasquez is here? No? Ian had video art for Century High School, and Gabby Horseman also was our sculpture winner, and they went on and competed. Well, you don't compete in that next level, but they, Purbridge Institute of Art was where their next displays were with students from all over Minnesota. So we want to say congratulations to those two in their visual arts. Next up, John Marshall. Is Coach Hayden here? Okay, how about any of our boys' tennis players? Okay, for boys' tennis, we had three Academic All-State. For them, Matthew Hung, Trajan McBroom, and Alex Youngk were also three Academic All-States for us. Girls' golf, I don't think I saw Coach Olenberg here. Ava Fevold was Academic All-State there. Coach Nguyen, I don't see. Taylor Adams and Samantha Salesman were Academic All-State, and they also had two of the visual arts students as well. Lily Sunbeck in painting and Elena Robinson in graphic design were also superior and best in show, and I'm not sure if either Lily are... Okay, come on up.
Come on up.
I'm with Lily. Lily, congratulations on that. Like I said, we had over 300 exhibits for this visual arts festival, and I think we had over 65 paintings, if I'm correct, that day. So some great competition for her in the field of painting. I wish I could remember. What was your drawing and what was the name of it?
It was a very chaotic piece of my friend. It was 38 by like 48 or something. It was a huge piece.
Yeah. Awesome, awesome. Well, congratulations. And did you go on and show at the Purbridge Center? Come here a second. I would like to hear about your experience with that. I'm going to put you on the spot.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, it was good, I guess. One thing I want to say is that I wish there was a little bit more support for RPS and the art system and just the way how I feel like a lot of students aren't like, they aren't supported, or they are, but they need their... I wish there was a little bit more expression with the arts in RPS, but I think it's definitely coming. And John Marshall, we have a lot of upcoming talents, so I'm really excited to go back and visit next year and see all the beautiful new art.
Awesome.
Lily, is that your mom sitting next to you there? Congratulations. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Whitney then.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, Dr. Pecel and School Board, thanks for allowing us to recognize all these hard-working athletes and the visual arts individuals that do such a great job. We had a number of teams that were very busy this spring, and this is a tough time to get them all down here, the jobs and all the good stuff, so we have a handful from each team. First of all, we're going to go with Mr. Smiley is going to come up with the girls' track, and he's going to also cover boys' track. He works with both programs. They all kind of coach together. This is Jared Smiley, our girls' track coach.
Thank you. Like Mr. Whitney said, I'll be representing both boys' and girls' track as Donnie is out of country right now with his family. We had several state participants that had had some great success. I also want to recognize both boys' and girls' track team achieved Academic All-State Gold Standard as well, specifically on our girl side. Very happy and excited that of our 86 9th through 12th grade athletes that were considered, 29 of them had 4.0 GPAs, which is excellent for our group. So guys' track, come on up as well. We'll recognize everybody all together. Up in front, you'll see the, from our girls' team, we are representing our 4x4 team of athletes that took fifth place and also were about a half second off from breaking a school record that was set in 1977. So a longstanding one that they were very close to being. We have Sophia Hawkinson, Kendra Horseman, Shannon Chen. We also had a hurdler represented in several hurdle events. Hannah Hansen took third overall state in 100-meter hurdles and fifth overall in state in the 300-meter hurdles, and her 100-meter hurdle race had an all-time state record broken. So she and her junior and senior season got to run in literally the fastest races Minnesota has ever seen. And then we also had a long jumper, Faris Salama, who competed at state as well. From the guys' side, you'll see a couple of guys represented here. Lucas Peterson taking fifth place in the pole vault with a tying personal record for him at state and a pretty windy and fun day represented there. And then Adam Myron, who is the state champion for AAA high jump and jumped at state, not his personal best, still a crazy, great jump. And then Carter Holcomb, who obviously is with his father, is also represented at state in the long jump, taking seventh, and then the 100-meter hurdles, breaking a school record and taking sixth place there, and the 300 hurdles as well for Carter. So our track and field athletes from Mayo High School.
I know a few, I know a few parents are here. Can we recognize the parents of either the girls' or track? Please stand. Congratulations. I was a sophomore in high school when that record was broken. There was no such thing as automatic timing. It was all old stopwatches. So that's how long ago that was. That's an old record. All right, next up, I don't believe we have any more of our coaches here. All of my coaches are working or are running camps right now. So first of all, we'll bring up our boys' golf team, and I know we have a few boys' golfers here. Our boys' golf coach is Gunner Olson, and the boys' golf team had an awesome year. They were Big Nine Champions, number one, and they qualified for the state tournament for the first time as a team in 25 years. So they had a great year, and with us tonight is Tim Sexton, Dylan Mede, and Will Smith, and then Isaac An, Jacob Brown, and Mikell Norby were also on that team. They placed fifth place as a team at the state meet, had a great state meet, tough meet up there. Edina was the state champions, but these guys represented us well. So this is your male boys' golf team. Do we have any parents of the golfers? Okay, all right. Next up, we'll bring the, let's go with the, I don't think the boys' lacrosse is here, so let's go with our tennis team. Same thing, we have a handful of our tennis players here. Our coach, Demaree, is running a camp right now, and he's not able to make it. And our boys' tennis team was at the state tournament as well. They were the Big Nine Champions and the section champions, probably multiple championships over the last 20-plus years, a great, outstanding, consistent program. These guys ended up losing in the state championship, so it was a tough one. They were state runner-ups. They had some big battles, they had two, three-hour plus. I was there, it was a long day of tennis. They battled hard to the end, but just couldn't quite beat Wayzetta in the state championship. So with us tonight are Ben Erickson, Caleb Neeson, and Philip Wisneski. So these are our three representatives. Tej Bagra, Caleb Cannell, Noah Wisneski, David Tang, Daniel Manier, Zach Thomas, Blake Thackeray, Quinn Kalmas, Sam Pickering, Ian Lee, Al McKee, and Max Rivera were also members of that state runner-up team. So congratulations to Coach Demaree and the boys' tennis team. Okay, and now I don't believe we have any other coaches, so our, as Mark said, we had a couple of individuals at the visual arts as well. Our advisor, Maureen Quinn, led these individuals there. Lindsay Peterson and Henry Schiller, I don't believe they're here. And Lindsay was digital photography. She was superior best in sight, and Henry Schiller was in crafts and was superior best in sight as well. So congratulations to our visual arts people as well. And then last but not least, Adam Gibson, our boys' lacrosse coach, couldn't be here either. We had one representative that was honorable mention All-State, and Adam Gibson, our coach, was the Section 1 Coach of the Year. They won the Big Nine Championship for the first time in the history of the school. So it was a great year for boys' lacrosse, and I do not believe they're here this evening, and we'd like to congratulate them as well. I believe that's it. Thanks again for recognizing us.
Well, thank you to all who came, and congratulations on a great season, and good luck to those seniors who are leaving us, and we hope to be seeing your names in the paper for your future successes in academics and in athletics and in life. Thanks so much. Item 4.2 is the Masbo Scholarship Announcement. This is an information item, Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan and Directors of the Board. As many of you know, we are a school district in which many of our leaders are leaders beyond our district, and one example of that is the leadership that our Chief Administrative Officer, John Carlson, has shown for our State Association of School Business Officers. And so John has been, I know from many colleagues around the state, a highly successful president of that organization. He's concluding that tenure, and that responsibility that he has ably performed over the last year gives him a chance to share some recognition with a student that he has chosen to recognize here. So John, thanks for your service as Masbo President, and we'll turn it over to you to share this exciting news.
Great, thank you very much, Superintendent Pecel and Chair Nathan and School Board members. As Superintendent said, I am wrapping up my year as being the President of the Minnesota Association of School Business Officials, otherwise known as Masbo. And since I got to gratefully perform all these duties with the support of my superintendent and district, I did not receive any compensation for this above and beyond my normal paycheck, but it is a longstanding practice of Masbo to pay back the district a little bit through a scholarship that we can award to a student. So I put out a scholarship application in May to our business education teachers and asked them to forward it to worthy graduating seniors so that we could award this tonight. We did receive applications back, several, actually quite more than I thought we were going to get, and the winner of that, after we pulled together a small committee of myself, Lori Sam, and Peter Rock, we landed on Jackie Villa as the winner. And so I asked Jackie and her teacher, Shelley Filzen from Century High School, to be here tonight. Shelley, thank you so much for coming on a non-student day. I appreciate that a lot to support your student. I just wanted to read you a quick little background about Jackie that she wrote in her application so that you can be as impressed with her as we were. She said, "Hi, my name is Jackie Villa, and my goals are to strive for a better future for myself and my family, especially coming from a background of Hispanic household. I would really like to make them proud and be the first generation from the family to graduate with a bachelor's degree. I have always wanted to major in business since I was 12 years old. I have always found the business classes very interesting, and I knew this was the right major for me. I am very interested in being a marketing manager. I took marketing class my junior year in high school and introduction to business my senior year. I gained so much insight from the class projects and really related to several of the guest speakers in each class." So with that, congratulations, Jackie, for winning this scholarship from Masbo. Would you like to say anything, or would you just?
There's millions of people listening, so you've got to get on the mic, you know?
I just want to thank my family. They couldn't be here today, but without them, I don't think I would be here. I also want to thank Ms. Filzen for being my business teacher this year. She really supported me, and yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, School Board and John, for all this too. But I also wanted to point out, I had the advantage of knowing Jackie since 7th grade. I taught her at Kellogg Middle School, 7th and 8th grade, and then the opportunity to follow up with a senior year, and I could see the potential in her even in 7th and 8th grade. And I also like to thank the School Board and RPS for having an environment where students feel enlightened and empowered to do things like this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seems like all the good stuff's done.
Yep, let's just call a meeting.
All right. Item 4.3, Board Member Committee Updates. Does any board member have anything to share from any committee meetings or other community events? Director Marvin.
There are a few things. First of all, I know a number of board members and many others attended Juneteenth.
It needs more than one day to really commemorate, celebrate what happened that day and make sure that everybody understands its significance. We also met, Dr. Garcia and I also met with the APEC group. This is the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, and it's a wonderful collaboration to have. We were filled in on some of the activities that the APEC people are working on. One of them includes planting a cornfield at Dakota Middle School. And it's going to be exciting. The kids were involved in planting it, they had some master gardeners who worked with them, and it'll be exciting this fall when they come back to do the harvesting, and they plan on donating the corn. So, so many great things going on.
Any other board members?
Well, I'd like to report, our Community Engagement Committee held our last community listening session last week here in the boardroom, and we had a number of community members come, and as we call it, speed data school board member. We had a few of them come and talk to a few of us, which was, which was great, and it was a great opportunity to hear some of the issues that they had on their minds and our way of presenting them some information or some resources to address them. We've had four of those this year, so that brings to a close our cycle, but we will be planning our school board goals this summer for the next year, and I anticipate that additional community engagement will be part of what we do. So thanks to all the, all the school board members who were able to attend one or more of them, and I think it was a great way to give the, the community an opportunity to engage with us in a different kind of forum. So thanks to all who attended.
Items 5.1 through 5.16 are our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for a separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Roll call vote? Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Cook?
Aye.
He's very shy.
Director Breen Loughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved. Item 6.1 in prep for action, the 2024-25 School District Calendar Review. This is an item in preparation for future action. Superintendent Pecow?
Thank you, Chair Nathan and board members. As you know, you have approved the school calendar for the upcoming year, the 2023-2024 school year, and we also know we have a lot of folks in the Rochester community who like to plan ahead, and so we are pleased to share with you a proposal for the 24-25 school year tonight. We're not asking you to vote, we're sharing this for your benefit and the community's benefit, and then our plan is to put it on the agenda for action at your next meeting. This is a calendar that was developed through dialogue both with our Rochester Education Association and our Rochester Principal Association. Want to thank them for the time that they gave to it. Both groups have got some masterminds of scheduling, and they represent critical perspectives in our school district. The draft calendar is posted on our website. A few highlights, we would be starting a bit earlier than we have in some recent years, so we can end a bit earlier than we have in some recent years. Back to School Week would begin on August 19th, 2024. We would retain our Step Into Learning, that is an opportunity for families to engage in our middle schools and our Meet Me in the Middle for middle school students, and also a day where our ninth graders are alone in our high schools, all of which we think is a beneficial transition into a new grade level and sometimes a new school. And that would take place on August 26th, 2024. And Step Into Learning would be the elementary schools and middle, first day of middle and high schools on the 27th of August. The 28th would be the first day for all elementary students. And then September 3rd would be the first day for preschool students. The last day of school for all students would be June 4th, 2025. A very important shift in this calendar schedule is that we would be moving the whole district to a semester schedule. Previously, in recent years at least, our elementary schools have been on trimesters, and our secondary schools have been on quarters, and we think this will have significant benefits for both families and staff and district operations to have us all on the same calendar. Seems like a no-brainer, wasn't simple to do and make all the days add up. I think in some ways, most importantly, I'm recommending that we bring back something that we tried last year as a response to the COVID pandemic, but this year for educational purposes. As board members will recall, we dedicated four Wednesdays last year strategically placed to give our staff time to adapt curriculum and instruction and to plan for navigating the challenges of the pandemic. Given that we are largely beyond the pandemic, hopefully forever, we didn't propose retaining that for the current school year, but as Joni Mitchell once said, "You don't know what you got till it's gone," and we missed it. And so I am proposing that we bring those days back because they proved to be highly productive days for our staff to undertake two related activities. One is professional development around our academic agenda and meeting student needs, and the second is time for individual educators to plan and adapt curriculum, to examine data. We've chosen those days as Wednesdays because they aren't about a long weekend. They are emphatically workdays when our staff engage individually and collectively in the important work of meeting our student needs. You can't do that alone or at 11:00 PM at night and address some of the major opportunities and major challenges that we're asking our teachers to address. We're calling them Curriculum Adjustment Days for next year because that's what happens, that teachers look, or also counselors, social workers, they look at how they have to adjust curriculum or programming to meet the actual needs of the students that they are serving. We will be providing direction, if you approve this schedule, to our schools that no more than half of those days, up to three hours, should be collaborative work for either professional learning communities or entire school communities, and the other half should be for individual planning, so that we do have that balance. We also have strategically placed those days at times in the school year when frankly we are in a very long stretch without a break. And we've done that because those are often the times when educators are most in need of the opportunity to roll up their sleeves and adjust what they're doing to meet student needs. So if approved, those days would be on September 25th, 2024, November 5th, 2024, March 12th, 2025, and May 7th, 2025. We know that not having students report is a challenge for some of our families. We have stood up our wonderful school age childcare program for all people who participate in it on those days, and we will be looking between now and the next school year at ways we can expand that programming. We know it's a challenge for families, especially with some young children. We want them to know we wouldn't recommend this if it wasn't highly beneficial to their children. It's not a day off, it is a critical day to do some heavy lifting and some work that we're asking our educators to do. We, absent those days, would just have one targeted professional development day on February 17th, 2025. I think this calendar represents a step forward for our district over this year's calendar in enhancing that critical time for professional collaboration and improvement. I will just tell you, I hope it's just the beginning, that we need to actually continually find ways to give our educators the time they need, both to work together and to work individually, to meet student needs. One of our great teachers sent me a video and a long email today on the school calendar in Singapore, and why she thinks that would actually do much better to meet student needs than what we've got. And I will tell you, it's a fascinating, different universe in which teachers are actually given more time for that collaboration and planning, and somewhat reduce student contact time, and not, incidentally, Singapore is the highest performing educational system in the world by many measures. So that's for future collaboration, but we've got to continue to be creative while also being responsive to the needs of our families. So the, the calendar draft is out there before you. I know that our colleagues in both the Rochester Education Association and the Rochester Principal Association have agreed that this would be an advisable calendar for us next year, and so I hope you will act favorably on it at your meeting, at your next meeting.
Great. Board members, any questions? For our remote board member. And families, if this reminds you, when you see the calendar for the 2024-25 year, that you don't know what the calendar is for our next school year that starts in 2023, that also is available on our website, and that was already approved by the board. All right, our next agenda item is 6.2, June 1st, 2023 Policy Committee Meeting Recommendations. Director Workman?
Yeah, the policy committee met on June 1st, and we presented our recommendations for the first briefing on June 6th, 2023, the second briefing on June 20th, 2023, and it will come before us for action at the next meeting.
Any questions or comments from board members on these draft policies? If not, we'll move on to our action items. Item 7.1, Approval of 2023-24 School District Budget. This is an action item. We have discussed this at our May 30th study session and our June 6th regular meeting, so I will read the resolution, ask for a motion in second, and if received, we'll open the floor for information and discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve and appropriate the 2023-2024 original expenditure budget in the following amounts. General Fund, $276,607,261. The Food Service Fund, $10,674,738. Community Services Fund, $13,705,422. Building Construction Fund, $19,895,016. Debt Service Fund, $27,189,285. Workers' Compensation Fund, $1,2,913. Dental Insurance Trust Fund, $2830,936. Health Insurance Trust Fund, $33,250,564. Printing Services Fund, $647,719. FSA Plan and HRA Trust Fund, $3215,000. OPEB Irrevocable Trust Fund, $1,763,481, for a total of $390,782,335. Be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the general framework for spending the remaining funds from the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act and the American Rescue Plan Act in the following estimated amounts as of May 17th, 2023. Financial Code 160 Flexible, $7,119,691. Financial Code 161 Learning Loss, $2,516,739. Financial Code 169 Learning Loss, $1,251,000. Financial Code 150 Summer Supports, $33,395. And Financial Code 159 Homeless, $36,728, for a grand total of $10,957,553. Do I have a motion?
Over approval.
Second. All right, it has been moved and seconded. Superintendent Pecow?
Thank you, Chair Nathan and board members. You have heard Chief Administrative Officer John Carlson give lengthy presentations on this. We've gone deep into it in study sessions, and so I'm going to limit my comments mostly to what has changed since your last discussion of this subject, which is not a lot. But to take one step back, this board recognized during the beginning of the 2021-2022 school year that tough financial decisions needed to be made to put the district on the long-term path to financial sustainability. And we developed a multi-year plan of reductions and investments in strategic priorities in the strategic plan, the first year of which we implemented last year, and the second year of which I'm asking you to implement this year. That has been extremely difficult work, and I want to, as we have every time, acknowledge that even though the vast majority of positions that are being eliminated in our system have allowed the person whose job is being affected to move into another job in our district, that's not the case for all employees, and even if you do have another job in another school, maybe in another grade level, there is still a sense of loss at needing to leave a previous situation that was probably a great fit for you. We also know that if we don't make these difficult decisions, we can find ourselves, as unfortunately some districts in our own state do, needing to talk about statutory operating debt. And we know that we're committed to not have that happen in Rochester Public Schools, and thanks to the decisions this board is making, that is not something we even need to talk about in our district. That said, we are not fully out of the process of needing to think hard about resources, as Chair Nathan just mentioned. I'm also recommending that we approve the last round of federal COVID funding to, I think appropriately and strategically maintain some core services, most of which we will need to pick up from our existing resources for the following year's budget. I'm confident we can do that, but that will also, next year, require this board to continue making some hard decisions. So what's changed since the previous review? As I noted, not a lot, and I think that is not because we have not been attentive to the many issues that have come out, including in some budget, in budget overview sessions that John and I did, but because by and large, this plan is a strategic one that spreads the investments and the reductions out across the district. Not evenly, that would not be strategic, but pretty much every part of the district, with a few exceptions, is participating in the difficult work that needs to happen to put ourselves on a sustainable financial path. So what are the smaller changes that we were able to make in the last couple of weeks? First of all, as you know, we had previously proposed a reduction in our media specialists at the middle and high school levels. That was definitely not a reduction, as the son of a former high school media specialist that I made lightly, but we're pleased that some new dedicated funding from the state of Minnesota has made it possible for us to rescind that proposed reduction. We had also initially proposed a reduction of one less-than-part-time position, about two-thirds time position at the Quarry Hill Nature Center. The flexibility of that new state funding, which we have confirmed multiple times, is allowed to supplant other existing funding, has allowed us to preserve that position for the next year, and I'll be asking Dr. Obamu and her team to work with the staff at Quarry Hill to really look at the full staffing model in that wonderful program and the unique partnership we have with the Friends of Quarry Hill to be sure that we can maintain the wonderful programming we've got there beyond this year. But we really needed more time to do that than was possible this, late this spring, and so I'm recommending also that we preserve that, that position. We have got one of our high schools, Century High School, at a moment of major transition with a new lead principal coming in and a almost entirely new leadership team. In order to support that school in making that adjustment, I am adding, recommending that we add one assistant principal position to that team. We have, as board members are aware, a really strong group of folks coming in to join that school. This is a position that I would not propose retaining beyond the upcoming year. I'm confident that we'll return to the, the size of an administrative team at Century High School that is reflected in our other two comprehensive high schools in a year through some attrition and organization, but I think we need to provide that extra targeted support administratively for Century High School in the year ahead. As board members know, we also are moving into our post-secondary and career readiness strategy as part of the strategic plan. We know school counselors have a central indispensable role to play, and we do not currently have someone who is a lead school counselor working in the district. That has become, as we've looked at the staffing and exciting improvement plans for next year, a liability that I think would be very difficult. We have a very dedicated leader and educator in Heather Hogan leading that work, and Heather needs a school counselor on that team. That'll be funded by COVID-19 funding, which has been a very appropriate use of those funds around the country for the next year, and we'll integrate that into our budgets in subsequent years. We are also shifting two previous positions of principals on special assignment in the Office of Academics from being posas to serving as directors. In my view, and Dr. Obamu concurred with this, whenever we use a special assignment position, whether it's for a principal or a teacher, it should be authentically a short-term position intended to address a, a time-bound need, and these were two positions that had been there for quite some time, and so we believed that they would be more appropriately classified as directors. That's largely a cost-neutral transition, but an important one for the board to be aware of. There are two positions that are really eliminations of existing positions at the coordinator level or program manager level and creation of a director-level position. And at a time when, when we're reducing budgets, essentially ending a position and creating one somewhat more senior position is not one somewhat more senior position is not something I did lightly. Candidly, those adjustments are replacing some hoped-for additions of more staff that I was hoping to recommend as part of a budget revision in the fall. I'm not going to recommend that, and instead ask two very talented leaders to be providing leadership at a higher level if you approve the positions. We'd be creating the directory of multilingual learning that will include not only support for what we have traditionally called our English language learner programming, but also world languages, where we have some really important heavy lifting to do, and a number of other areas. If the board approves creation of that position, I will also recommend that we, I will be recommending that you approve appointment of Natalia Benjamin into that position at a subsequent meeting. Similarly, we would be eliminating a position of program manager in early childhood and creating a director of early, early learning, and I will be recommending the appointment of Erica Schumacher in, to that position if you approve it. Again, for people wondering, in a budget of this size, as Director Nathan just read out those pretty large amounts, why are we highlighting individual positions? Because in the big picture, it's not a lot of money, but it's in the interest of complete transparency, and so people have a clear sense of these moving adjustments. And finally, as we were taking the step, which I do think is the right step, to eliminate one director position in special education in our district, we realized through some very intense work over the last two weeks that we need to enhance our supervisory and support personnel for our special education staff and students with some additional positions at the coordinator level. And so I'll be recommending that we eliminate that director level position, but that we also are creating coordinator positions to support special education students generally, and then two positions with an emphasis on early childhood education. Cumulatively, that means we would actually be going up one position in our special ed leadership in the district this year compared to last year, but we would have one fewer director position in the district. So with that, I'm certainly glad to ask John to come back up and answer any other questions about these changes or the district's financial position or this budget recommendation, but I think this brings us to a pretty important conclusion to a process that literally began the, intensively began the second week of school, but really began in its early stages almost as soon as we finished the budget for last year. And so that's my recommendation with those adjustments, and all of the adjustments that I just walked you through are included in the proposal that we're asking you to vote for today.
Board members, questions or comments? Director Workman?
Yeah, I just have a comment, and you know, I know this is an incredibly difficult time for every department to have to experience any kind of cut in their personnel, and I think that the team led by Superintendent Pecow have been very diligent in making sure, as you said, that those cuts were not, that they were planned cuts, rather than just "we're going to cut everybody, you know, 5% or 50% or whatever awful number we have to consider." But along with that, so many times we don't really recognize the people behind the scenes who have done so much work. In John's department, we see John's face every time we have a board meeting, with very few exceptions, but under his leadership, certainly the team has done an incredible amount of work, as, as well as our building administrators and the teachers who are impacted and who have had, have made recommendations to the team. So I think it's important that we remember that. This is a difficult budget, but I think everybody did the best that we could under the circumstances, and then we throw into the mix the cyber attack that we had, which also slowed things down. It was a Herculean effort on the part of many people, and I really appreciate all of it.
Director Barlow?
Question and a statement. The question will probably, well, who knows what it'll go to. The question deals with the usage of financial codes versus in terms of our normal budget having designated names, titles. So, but really, the question regarding the financial code, under which of these five financial codes would the funding for the lead school counselor come under? I'm just trying to, just get a good sense of where it would place. I don't have a problem with it, I was just kind of curious.
Thank you for getting up, John.
Yeah, thank you for that question. You have stumped me on that because I don't know exactly if we put that into the federal COVID funds for this year. Okay.
Yeah, it's COVID where all the other council positions are.
Perfect, then it is in the financial code 160.
Okay, thank you. And then I know we're not supposed to comment regarding personnel. I definitely agree with the reorganization and the establishment of a director of early learning, and I'm certain the person identified will do an excellent job.
And I think I'd like to echo Director Workman's comments about, obviously, the traditional budget work that has gone into collecting the numbers, putting together the staffing projections, working with the buildings. You know, we've seen that year after year, and, and we're lucky to have Mr. Carlson, I see Andy Krokstad in the audience, and the other team members that we have. But one of the board goals we set for ourselves this year was also being more transparent and providing the community more information about the budget. And it was something that we could not do alone as a board, because while we take all this information in, no one explains it as well as Mr. Carlson and the superintendent. So I appreciate, in the budget reduction part of the process, the outreach that was done to our buildings and our staff, and in addition to the other staff members of the district who worked on developing the budget reduction proposals, and then the recent webinars that Mr. Carlson and the superintendent did to really explain this in detail, and, and kudos to everyone who attended, by the way, on late spring/summer evenings, to, to learn more about the budget, because, and this is really the only way, it's, it's a complicated set of information, it's a complicated set of decisions, and we are trying to be as transparent about it as possible so that we can have the trust of the community as to how we're spending the money and how we are targeting it to serve the needs of our students and support our staff. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that.
Director McLaughlin?
Kind of along those same lines, I also want to comment that I really appreciate the clarity and the transparency of the updates for this meeting, that I think that's something that we've lacked in prior years as to, you know, last-minute changes, what is the impact, and this is very clear, so it's very easy to follow and understand, and again, appreciating the additional money from the state. And then finally, the question and answers from the board, I think that was also helpful in making sure that we're all on the same page, and I appreciate all those things.
Director Marvin?
Just a quick comment. Certainly, the community has been involved in this process for some time now. In addition to the listening sessions, they've contacted staff, administration, board members, and one thing that I find gratifying is, is no matter how passionate people are about where money should be spent, where it should be cut, our administration has always had answers. It's not just "this is what we're cutting," but also, "or what we're keeping," but this is why, and the why has always been about what do our kids need the most? Where's it going to make the biggest difference? Which programs are absolutely critically important, and which ones can we change a little bit? And it's, it's been a challenging process, certainly, especially for, for John, Dr. Pecow, and all the others who've worked on it, but it's been really, for me at least, very educational and gratifying in terms of knowing that in this district, kids come first. So thank you for that.
Director Barlow?
And just one final comment. I'm looking forward to the establishment of the Community Budget Committee, because we, we do, we're trying to demonstrate that the voice of the community absolutely does matter, and that they will have a seat at the table, and I'm looking forward to that process rolling itself out, and, and hopefully those parents who are individuals who have expressed concern over recent months regarding this process will realize that they have an opportunity to be a part of the process.
Superintendent?
Yeah, Director Barlow, I really am glad you mentioned that because it slipped my mind. The first meeting will be September 11th at 7:00 PM, 5:00 PM, concluding at 7:00 PM. And the people who are going to be on the committee already know that, so I'm not announcing it now, but yes, it's coming.
It might be news to some of us.
Yeah.
I'm making notes.
Yeah, that's right.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, I will ask Assistant Board Clerk Sam to take the role.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Cook?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
The budget has been approved. Item eight point one is our annual board calendar draft, latest version. Are there any items that a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on a future school board meeting agenda? Hearing none. Item nine point one are the board questions and responses for this meeting. Those questions submitted by board members and the answers will be available on our Symbli site. Item nine point two, upcoming, upcoming board meeting dates. On June 27th at 5:00 PM, we have a study session. On July 18th at 5:00 PM, we have a special session for superintendent evaluation, and on that same night, immediately following the special session, there will be a study session. On July 25th at 5:30, we have a regular meeting, and on August 1st at 5:30 PM, we have a regular meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:31 PM. Thank you, Justin.